Five thirty. I would like to call this workshop the Public Place City Council meeting. Can we please stand for the closing of the meetings? After the closing of the meetings.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does the guy in there would like to do a presentation this evening?
Dear God, we thank you that we can come to do the work of the city. We thank you for our wonderful staff here and help us to make the decisions according to thy will. In Jesus' name I ask.
Thank you. So this evening, this is a Tuesday workshop. There will be no public testimony this evening. This is an opportunity for the city council to hear presentations on stormwater utilities, emergency medical services, the purchase of a surplus ambulance, a pocket INet franchise, and investment strategy. First on the agenda is the stormwater utility.
Actually, we told Peter that Peter Moye that he could go first at five thirty the other day. So we're arranging.
It's okay. It'd be nice to know.
Surprise.
Yeah, so he's waiting on his agenda. We just need to dial him in on the phone there.
And which one's this one? This one's the investment?
This is ambulance.
Ambulance.
So you're gonna have to pardon me, but I can't read the...
How's that? Seven seven three.
Three. Oops. Let's try.
Welcome to Ring Central Meeting. Enter your meeting ID followed by the pound or hash sign. Enter your participant ID followed by pound or stay on the line. You are in the Ring Central Meeting now. There are two participants in the meeting.
Hi, wait there. This is Mayor Crowder. You're online with the Public Place City Council, Councilmember Bobbin, Councilmember Nyhagen, Councilmember Sherman, Councilmember Cleveland, and Councilmember Salvi along with the city staff, Mr. Ruscicello, Ms. Kilgore, Ms. Nysel, and a cast of thousands in the audience.
Okay. Now, can you see the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
We can see it. It's busily, actually, it's not busily turning away. The little time scale is frozen.
Oh, okay. So are you seeing my presentation now?
No.
No.
Okay. So let's try and share. How about now?
Yep, yes.
Yep, there we are.
Okay. Okay, Mayor, you just want me to go ahead?
You can, the floor is yours.
Okay. So again, for those, and how many of the council members were there last time? Are there one or two new ones, did I say?
There are, there are at least two new ones.
Okay. All right. So let me just briefly go over what we had talked about before. And we had presented the results. We had a few different scenarios. And based on those scenarios, the council members and the mayor at that time said, well, we want to try a few different things. And so since that time, we received some additional more detailed information from the City of Walla Walla Fire Department. We've taken a look at that and incorporated those incidents into the forecast. In addition to that, we also talked about trying to make sure we have some money to purchase a new ambulance as well as replace the ambulances as we move forward. So we've also done that. The other more important part about it was the original baseline study that we did had all the EMS levy money offsetting the cost for availability. And at that time, we said, well, we need to allocate that EMS levy partially to demand costs. And likewise, the group said, well, we also are going to spend the same amount of general fund or have the same amount of general fund that we have now, so we should incorporate that into the analysis. And so we've done that. And both the EMS levy and the general fund support have been divided among the availability cost as well as the demand cost. In addition to that, we had a couple of different scenarios. We had sort of the status quo as is. We had, at that time, we also had a, an alternative that had hiring one firefighter in 2019 and another firefighter in 2020. We still have those two scenarios, but at the same time, we also discussed, well, maybe we should have what it takes to have one firefighter on duty 24/7. And that number came out to be five. And so in addition to the one person that's already there, we added a scenario that has four new hires. And on top of that, there was some suggestion that we take a look at, well, if you still provide this BLS service, well, with that cost, we want to that go fight. And then there was some discussion, so, well, what if we did all the transport as BLS? And so we did a scenario that way. When we get to that scenario, we'll talk a little bit about it because that's the one that is a little bit more difficult to forecast because to be able to identify the ALS calls that really didn't quote need ALS service or something like that, the cities, Walla Walla, the fire department would have had to go through every incident report to determine that. So we didn't do that. So that's one thing that we'll talk about later on. So were there any questions about those scenarios? And does anybody recall anything a little bit different in terms of what we needed to do since the last meeting?
I think that pretty well reproduces what we talked about.
Okay. All right. Next slide. So here are the baseline, the scenario that we have today. We have the baseline at full cost recovery through rates. And we only put that up there as to show you sort of if you didn't have any other subsidy other than the EMS levy and the transport revenues, and you wanted to fully fund this without any general fund support, these are what the rates would be. We did have and included as part of that cost, purchase for one used ambulance, which the department's planning on doing, and then also reserving for ambulance replacement, which means that we actually have two ambulances that we would need to replace in roughly six years of what we're assuming the life of an ambulance would be. And again, we would start transporting BLS incidents. And again, as I said, this scenario assumes that everything would be, all the costs would be collected based on the rates. And then we also put in that one thing that said, okay, well, we should divide the EMS levy revenues into both availability and demand costs. And the way we did that basically is based on the, what we call the availability and demand time. So all the time that the firefighters and the volunteers were spending on calls specifically, that was the demand time, we added all that up. And then the rest of the time, we, they're available to four calls, we identified what that cost was. And again, we split all that time between the fire calls as well as the EMS calls. And that ratio of availability to demand, that percentage is what we use to allocate the EMS levy revenues as well as the general fund. So the next one, scenario two, is the same as scenario one, except now we've added a level of general fund support to help offset both the availability and demand costs. Scenario three is that one we just talked about before. It includes the same thing in terms of the ambulance replacements and purchases. It includes the same type of allocation of EMS revenues as well as general fund revenues. But what it does is, as we mentioned before, we have one additional firefighter added in 2019 and then one more in 2020. And whatever the difference is, the rate is basically supporting all that extra, the extra cost. And scenario four, we make sure that we add, have one on-duty firefighter 24/7. And so that means we added four. At the time, we said, well, it takes five to have one full-time, on-duty, 24 hours, seven days a week firefighter available. Again, we're using pretty much the same general fund EMS levy allocations and support. And then scenario five is basically the same as scenario four, except now we are doing all the transports. And so roughly, let me just give you, I'll give you some specifics in a little bit. So any questions about those scenarios? But that's what we've got. There may be something in between also at the end of the meeting that maybe you're gonna tell, ask me to say, well, do this one too. What we hope to do is by the end of this meeting, if there aren't any other changes or any other discussion, then we'll write up the report and hopefully submit a draft report next week sometime.
Councilwoman Brusell? We have one, we have one to talk.
I have a question. So the firefighter's time that is not spent answering calls is divided up between fire and EMS. So if we add additional staff, the additional firefighters, where does the funding for the firefighter part of that come from?
That's gonna, from the fire part, that's gonna be the general fund.
Okay, so adding the four additional staff is, is not just maintaining the general fund support, it would actually increase the amount of general fund that we would need?
Well, we haven't, we haven't actually changed the amount of general fund support. So I think whatever you're spending today, you're still spending. It just gets shifted slightly to more general fund to the fire as opposed to, sorry about the, the fire truck going right by your hand.
It's pretty sound, isn't it?
Well, you're getting into that.
It doesn't get better than this.
Yeah, yeah. The general fund is still supporting all the fire. And so whatever the difference is between now and the ambulance utility, if, say, the general fund portion for the EMS and the ambulance utility goes down a little bit, then that's picked up by the rates. So you're still spending, you know, roughly whatever it is, you know, $700 some odd thousand or so on the fire department. It's just that whether or not some of it's going to fire versus the ambulance utility part, that might switch, but you're still spending that amount. And the general fund is picking up all the fire stuff. So when we calculated how to do the rates, we said, okay, well, the fire costs are X. So out of that $700,000 or so, whatever it is, that amount has to be funded by the general fund. Whatever's left goes to the ambulance utility. And then we divided it based on the availability and demand ratio. So any difference is picked up by the rates.
So scenario four and five, where we add four additional staff, does not increase the general fund amounts?
That's correct.
That's, that's correct. We're still assuming that whatever you're spending today, you're gonna be spending, you know, in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
There was gonna be one other question, I thought?
Nope, that's, that's it.
Okay. All right. So this is the framework that we had, and this is, this is totally baseline. So this is what you're doing today, and this is how your costs are. If you didn't make any changes roughly in terms of cost for 2018, what we, what we'd estimate is that basically you're spending, out of the $1.1 million, we're spending about $580,000 for EMS, the ambulance utility. And of that $580,000, approximately $190,000 would be going for, as demand cost, and about $390,000 is going for availability cost. Some of the key assumptions for, for those, when we talk about the fire portion, for example, all the benefits related to fire prevention, you know, the sound person, those who are related, we call that all fire costs. On the new firefighters, it's based on proportion amount of time spent on fire and EMS responses during those particular shifts. And, you know, we have a schedule that was provided to us as to when the current firefighter there that's going out on calls along with when the volunteers are going out on calls. And so we just modified that. If there was new staff, then we knew that every time there was a call, regardless of whether it was like on the weekend, where today you don't have an available person. So now you send two volunteers. Well, under the new scenario, if you hired somebody, now you'd have one firefighter and one, only one volunteer. So, but we divided those costs between the fire and EMS part. The stipends for volunteers were allocated basically on the ratio of fire and EMS incidents. And EMS, the EMS stipend costs were allocated off the demand cost because they only get paid when they go out on that call. So, and then, as I said before, the time not responding to incidents is considered standby or availability time. And that's really based on the proportion of the demand time for fire or EMS incidents. Administrative costs, we basically spread those based on the number of incidents. In the budget, there's a specific, there's a specific line item for equipment under fire suppression and under rescue and urgency aid. Depending on which category it was, we put all those costs into the, into the fire bucket or the EMS bucket. Now, these, these last assumptions are the ones that we are talking about that are new. So for, at least as what we understand, it's gonna be potentially an ambulance that's gonna be purchased for about $30,000. So we want to make sure we cover that purchase. And then there's gonna be replacement funding now because you already have an existing ambulance or rescue unit that's outfitted to be able to handle transports. We're now gonna have, a need to have replacement in six years for each ambulance. So that roughly is about $56,000 per year based on an inflated amount in six years. So we're trying to make sure that after six years, we have enough money to spend roughly, I think the original cost was about $150,000 for a new ambulance. And again, we talked about the general fund and EMS levy funds being allocated based on the proportion of availability and demand time. The whole transport scenario assumes that all transports would be done as BLS. But I think we have to recognize that it might not be completely possible to do that because there might be some additional incidents where, you know, if somebody has a heart attack or something and there actually is a need for a paramedic, then in that case, Walla Walla would still have to provide that care as opposed to your fire department. So we don't know exactly what that's gonna be. As I mentioned, we'd have to go through every incident report to determine, you know, which one, how many incidents would actually still been ALS versus that. But we didn't, we didn't have that data. And Walla Walla was a little bit reluctant. They have to go through a thousand, you know, 500, 600 or so reports to make sure, 200 or something like that, reports to find out and have somebody look at it and see what was done. So, but again, it's something that maybe is, I don't know, that that's maybe a total movement that you would do. It might be that that, that this doesn't happen until, you know, several years down the line depending on what your plans are. So any questions about assumptions? Okay. So when we take that $580,000, again, this is sort of status quo, we allocate the, the cost, as we said, there's the EMS levy, and this is one without any general fund support. But we have to put the EMS levy in there based on some of the issues concerning how the legislation has been, was put together. So as you can see, we have those revenues, the demand revenues, all the transport revenues and things have to be credited against the demand cost. And so you can see that when we do the EMS and the, the transport revenues, it comes out to be about $137,000 revenue. So that leaves us with about $53,000 in demand cost that we have to collect. In terms of availability, we have about $157,000 in, in costs that we have to collect. For those that weren't here before, the legislation says in terms of availability cost, everybody pays the same. So it doesn't make any difference. Whereas on the demand cost, depending on your usage of the service, we can charge you a different rate for the demand charge. So not everybody uses, so the more you use it, the more, the possibility is that you'll end up having to pay more of the demand cost. And you'll see how that works in another slide here. So in total, we need to cover from rates, and again, this is not without any general fund support, roughly $211,000. So when we figure that out, just to give you an idea, based on what we have identified so far, there's really roughly about 4,400 what we call billing units. And what does that mean? Well, each single family is a billing unit. Each apartment unit or condo unit, we consider that to be a separate billing unit. So a 10-unit apartment might be, would be 10 billing units. For nursing homes or assisted living homes, those kind of care facilities, we consider each bed as being a billing unit. Now, the thing about that is the legislation says, well, if you are fully paid on Medicaid, then those people are exempt from paying any of the costs. So we have to take those, in this case, it's estimated that there were about 128 fully paid Medicare, Medicaid patients in those nursing homes. And that's applied to a single-family person who's receiving Medicaid home services in their own home instead of being in a nursing home. But that's something we just don't know. If you go through with this, you would have to make sure that at some point in time, when you send out the original notices that there's gonna be this ambulance utility, you probably have to have some sort of process or notification that says, well, if you receive in-home services, full, full in-home services that are paid by Medicaid, then you will be exempt and you need to contact us so we can exempt you. So that's something that will have to happen. The commercial is every, every other business and everything else. Public, streets and schools, really, it's really the public. Basically, any governmental agency and the official school district, if you had a port, it would be the port also. So we identify that there might be 233 billing units there, which means that basically every school would be considered a, you know, a billing unit. In the future, when forecasting what would happen in 2019, it was estimated that there might be another 40 single-family homes coming online and another 100 made multi-family units coming online in 2019. Other than that, we're just assuming that the overall growth rate in billing units would be about 1% a year. Any, any questions on this? Okay. So when we look at the call, because we have to divide the, you saw we have some demand costs, and we now need to identify how that demand cost is split up. And so we look at the number of calls, and you can see that half the calls are related to the single-family sites, 64 multi-family. Obviously, almost a third of the calls are going to nursing homes or care facilities. And then the rest are, as you can see, the commercial and, and the public. So what this means is that, as we went back here just to show you, of this 53,000, when we start splitting that up, that's gonna mean that a third of that 53,000 is gonna be paid for by the nursing homes, and half of it's gonna be paid for by the single-family billing units. And again, we're assuming that in terms of incident growth, it's about 1.5% per year. And that's based on the differences in the growth between 2016 and 2017. So when we figure out all these charges, you can see that, okay, for the demand charges, that single-family has, everybody pays the same for availability here, $37 roughly annually. On the demand side, you can see that single-family units would pay about $100 for their demand share. And the total billing cost annual charge to a single-family home would be $45 per home. In contrast, as we mentioned before, of that, you know, $50 some odd thousand, you know, a third of that is gonna be picked, has to be picked up by the nursing homes in terms of, because they create a third of the demand. And because they have such fewer, so fewer billing units, you can see that the demand charge is, would be quite high, assuming, yeah, that doesn't include the general fund, but this is full-cost rate recovery. And again, you don't have any hotels most, you may have some hotel, motel, but we didn't see any demand or the demand was very little. So, so what that would mean is, and I know you have a, a number of them, a nursing home with 40 beds that would be eligible to be repayment, would end up having to pay $192 for each bed, and that would be roughly $7,700 a year. Whereas a multi-family apartment unit with a 10-unit, they would end up paying about $420 per year. So, and again, that is based on having no general fund support. So that's sort of that baseline. This is the incident, incident forecast that we use.
We do have a question.
Sure.
On the nursing home part, so a nursing home with 40 beds, would they be able to say, 20 of those beds are Medicaid, so they don't pay? Or do they pay per bed regardless of Medicaid status?
No, they, we would have to do something, and this, this 40 beds, you know, because most of the nursing homes that you have, at least the data we have, are like maybe 80 to 100 beds. And so we've already sort of taken that into account, I think. So the average is probably, they would have 40 beds that are not, would be included as billing units.
Okay.
Remember, we took out that 128.
Yeah, I just, I wasn't sure how that carried through, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So, and this was just, like I said, this was an example, but based on, I mean, the data that we had seen, I think a lot of those homes are close to, you know, 60, 70, 80 beds total.
We have another question?
Yep.
Do we have the information, have I missed that, on what we're currently paying through the levy? Like, how much is this changing? What, I mean, I guess what's going through property taxes versus what would, what this would, what this cost is? Like, are we, no one's paying anything?
No one's paying.
Okay.
We already accounted for, you have about $290,000 that you're getting through the EMS levy.
Right.
And so that's already been accounted for.
Yeah.
So if you go, again, if you go back, we'll go back a couple, see, we've already accounted for this 2018, the EMS levy here.
Yeah. But we're, yeah.
There's, there's no, there's no utility now.
People that are paying roughly, you know, $290,000 in revenue that you're receiving for that EMS levy. And so that's been factored in, and we've taken that out of the cost. So again, the rates are only trying to recover this $211,000. We're not, you're getting a roughly $370,000 in some sort of revenue. Most of this is really, you know, the EMS levy. So they would be paying the EMS levy in addition to the ambulance rate. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
So again, this was the forecast. So what we've done is we've put all those expenses together, there's a number of tables that, like, you know. that, like the one you just saw. And so just so you can see the cost, and we did this based on 2019, because we're sort of assuming that, that you would implement this as of 2019. Um, so, um, those costs, you can see that the costs are a little bit higher now because we've, we've got to add the, the cost for the, the, the replacement ambulances, we've done some other things. Our revenues are a little bit higher. Um, so under scenario one, again, this would be without any general fund support, um, you know, that, that makes a difference there. Um, and in scenario two, which doesn't include the general fund support, which is still basically doing what you're doing, but having general fund, um, you can see that, uh, that drops down, the need for the rate is really now only about 111,000, um, with the general fund support. When we go to scenario three, which is adding one, um, person in 2019, another in 2020, the costs start to jump up again, even with the general fund support. Um, so now we're jumping up by about, you know, 40,000 from what we had previously. The next year, 2020, it's going to jump up again probably by about the same amount, another four-year, so $1,000 on top of that. But we didn't show, we're just showing what would happen in 2019. Um, and then the scenario four, which is hiring those four additional persons to be able to start in 2019, you can see now that even though we, we've got roughly about the same amount of general fund going into it, um, we're getting a little bit of revenue, but we've now got to recover from rates about $363,000. And then under scenario five, where we're doing all the transports, we are actually recovering all our costs because the rate revenues, the general fund and the EMS levy, those offset the total cost of, um, the demand charges. And so actually, we're $62,000 to the good. Now, why is that happening? Currently, under the BLS, um, uh, transport, um, in, I think, overall in 2017, um, or 2018, the forecast was that there would be roughly, and today, uh, I think in 2017, Walla Walla is transporting roughly over 500, um, calls a year. And I think in this case, for 2018, it was like something like, 2019 is like 584 is what we're sort of estimating. And of that, only 222 were BLS calls. And so that's why this revenue, um, is much lower, even if you include the, the general fund and everything else like this. You can see that this is also, this revenue is a little bit, um, lower, about the same because we're still going to feed the fire, the gen, use the general fund to support the fire department, the other fire side of this. So there's no, um, additional general fund being spent for fire services. And anything that's left has got to be picked up by the rates. But, um, in this case, in the scenario five, we're assuming, uh, that I think there was probably about over 300, quote, by the reimbursement staff, 360 some odd ALS calls. So now those 360 calls would be considered BLS service and you would get only the BLS average rate. But it does almost double the, the amount of revenue that you have just for transport revenue. So what does this do to the, to all the rates? So in 2019, these are the full rates. Um, so under the existing ones, if you didn't do anything and you didn't put any more general fund in, you can see what those rates are. Those are much higher as, as we had talked about before. And this is for 2019. The costs have been inflated and, you know, the incidents have been increased a little bit and some things like that. And we've put in some of those additional costs compared to the baseline, which was basically your 2018 budget. In scenario two, where we're starting to put that general fund back in there, you can see the rate starts going down. And then scenario three, okay, we're hiring new staff, we're eventually hiring two more people. So basically during those weekdays, I think you're, you're pretty much covered, um, with the firefighters during that time, but on holidays and weekends and things like that, the volunteers still have to provide the service. Um, in scenario four, it goes up big because, you know, we hired two more people. Um, and again, we're still just doing BLS. And then in scenario five, because we've achieved more revenue, um, that offsets the demand charges, this is just a really only availability cost and it becomes, you know, average of $56, uh, I think a year, um, for, in scenario five. So, um, and again, like I said before, under scenario five, we, there's probably still going to be some calls that really are truly ALS calls that the, the, the EMTs can't really provide some of the services that might be necessary and Walla Walla still might have to be called. So, so that would be it. The next slide really are just the rate scenarios every year for each, each one. I didn't want to spend much time on this because they're, really, we're just talking about 2019, maybe 2020 is what you might have to do, um, but these are available for you to look at if you want to do so. So what are your key policy decisions that still need to be made? Again, do you want to still establish an ambulance utility? Uh, as we mentioned earlier in the first briefing, there are certain, some, certain some requirements that you're going to have to do in terms of only public hearings, talking about this, you know, cost of service study. Um, and you'll have to put together, um, you know, a billing, the billing system, you'll have to, you know, have some of those things that notice, like we said, for those people that are single-family who might be on, um, receiving Medicaid in-home services, you're going to have to have some sort of notice to those people, do it through the bills. Um, so then you're going to have to buy the ambulances and some other things like that. Um, if you're going to do the hiring staff, you're going to have to start probably that process probably towards the end of this year. If you do, um, decide to go with the, the ambulance utility, you know, are you at full cost recovery, which would be scenario one, which, you know, in general, we just put that out there just so you could see what it is. I think, um, based on the last meeting, that's not really what you want to do. So then you're really, um, and the second key question is should the city maintain its current general funding, that's levy support? And, you know, that's really basically scenario two, which says, okay, we'll do this, we're not going to add any more staff, we will put in the ambulances, have the ambulances available, um, but we're not hiring any more staff. And then scenarios, uh, basically three and four, we're adding full-time staff, whether in scenario three, you're adding two more people, and in scenario four, you're adding four more people. And then the last, uh, scenario is, you know, do you do all the transports? So those are what I think are the major policy questions that you might have to ask. I don't know if there's any other, uh, scenarios that you want us to include when we issue the, the report, uh, but these are things that you should be at least, uh, thinking about and having some discussion about. So outside of that, that's basically my presentation. I'm certainly available to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
Thank you for this presentation. I think it's pretty clear about how, um, and, or what our choices are if we decide. But my assumption is the discussion of the first question of should we, and the context around that, which is where I'm really confused, is not really your issue and that we should let you go before we have to delve into those weeds. Is that correct?
That's fine, that's right.
Okay. And this has been very helpful, thank you.
Yes. I don't see any other questions, thank you very much.
Okay, and if, um, if you do have some questions or some other things that you want us to change, just let Sarah or Chief Winter know or, or.
Oh, we've never been shy, you know that.
Yeah, so, and hopefully you're having decent, very good weather over there, too. We're having nice weather here today, too.
Seventy-seven and sunny with a breeze.
Uh, yeah, well, I, we're not thinking of it coming over. Anyway, uh, like I said, if you have any questions, then let us know and we'll be a pleasure. Otherwise, we'll start, uh, putting together the report and if, if there's any, another scenario that you think you might want us to run, then just let us know.
Thank you so very much.
All right. Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Bye.
So, my, my, my only, I have one big question, which is, and that's for the chief, is, what's, chief, what do you think the availability or the feasibility of doing all BLS transports?
I'm getting 100%, like Peter said, is maybe not overly realistic. Um, there, there are times where we, we have stacked calls as an example, where we would have to rely upon our mutual aid partners to come in and assist us. There is another agency who is going ALS, uh, in our valley here, uh, and they are interested in, in talking and helping provide those services, uh, if I possibly through horse trading versus at a cost to the city. So, I mean, there, there's lots of that out there.
So do you think 10% ALS?
I think that, that's reasonable. Most of our community is, I need a ride to the hospital because I'm not feeling well. We don't have a lot of very traumatic, uh, car incidences, uh, falling off roofs, those types of things. Just love the city. I don't know.
So, excuse me, I'm, I'm confused on how this works. Because, um, like if I'm having a heart attack and call, and so the fire department comes out and says, wow, you're really in bad shape, but you're too bad, we can't take care of you, we're going to call somebody else, and we have to wait them, them. I just, I don't understand how, how the whole thing fits together.
So EMS works on what we call a tiered response system, where, um, we try and get you life-sustaining aid as quickly as we can. And then if you need more assistance, then they either respond or we, uh, using a really old EMS term, we swoop and scoop and we call you to hospital. We are extremely close to the hospital, um, so it is our MPD, our, our medical program directors believe that a heart attack call is a BLS call, um, because we can do CPR, we can do all those things and drive you to the hospital five minutes away. That is as good, in his opinion, as coming to the call, running drugs, running drugs, running drugs and.
So, but for something that would need like IVs and stuff, that would be more like, probably like a bad car accident or something? I mean, so is that kind of sorted out at the dispatch to say, okay, this sounds like it's going to need to be more than a B, so we'll go ahead and send somebody else?
So we use, um, what we call as, as King County protocols, which is designed in King County that said, you ask the caller these questions and here's the answer, here's the proper response, and that's what you get. The chiefs in the valley then say, if you get to this answer and recommends this, that equates to a fire truck, a rescue, an ambulance, a, a police officer, or whatever type of a call. Um, and, and those are designed by jurisdiction and by where in that jurisdiction you are.
Chief, do you think it would be helpful to have Dr. Underhill, uh, come and talk about this prior to?
I would think so. He, he's a very knowledgeable person on the topic. He goes to all the, the conventions and is up on all the latest, um, pre-hospital care type of, of, uh, trends.
I'm sorry? Um, I, I've tried to read everything, but I can't figure out what is going on. Um, so we have an EMS levy, we have Walla Walla, they keep sending out random things and everybody's mad, and that's about as much as I've been able to figure out. So I really appreciate, well, I would really appreciate some context, because I'm like, so if we don't do anything, what's going to happen?
If, if we don't, if we don't do anything, then eventually Walla Walla is going to send us a bill that says, here's, using, using this, what can all, this, this is, this formula created by legislature, legislation is so Byzantine, the Eastern Roman Empire would be very proud of it.
Actually, I don't think the Eastern Roman Empire was that bad.
Yes, it was. Lots of rules that didn't make a lot of sense. And this is one of those, this is one of those, this business of availability and demand is what's driving a lot of this confusion, because the cost is the cost.
Right.
Whether, whether it's over availability or demand, doesn't make any difference. You got a body there, you're going to pay him no matter what. But what they're trying to do with this formula is to say, how do we allocate costs based on the actual cost of response? And, and, and trying to divide that up, and that's where this gets to the Byzantine and, and. And so the cost is the cost, and the question, the, the question that we have to ask is, okay, how do we, how do we want to structure this? Because the state says if we're going to have an ambulance utility, we've got to consider availability and demand as part of that cost structure. The, the reason that I asked the chief about, you know, what, what do you think the, the, our ability to respond with BLS to most of these incidents, if you take a look at, at scenario five here, actually, cost is pretty cheap. It's, it's about, what, you know, five bucks a month, uh, across the board, based on, based on that. So getting back to, you know, if we do nothing, eventually we're going to get a bill from the city of Walla Walla that says, here's how much we think it's costing us to provide you the service. If the, you know, initially that was what, $73,000?
It keeps moving based on who you talk to.
Yeah, but our concern, my, my concern with that is that is a point in time estimate of what it's going to cost. And over time, that's going to continue to bump up because the city of Walla Walla hasn't done any cost control on their fire department. I mean, they, when they roll out in, in an ambulance, they're rolling out with two paramedics. That's about as expensive a person as you can get in a fire department. Uh, and you don't need a paramedic to drive an ambulance, but that's what they do in the city of Walla. And so the, that cost is going to, those costs are not, we can't control those, and that's going to go up over time. So.
So the 600 bucks that I pay to arrive in the ambulance, where does that go?
That, that, if, if you took a look at the slides here, if you go to slide, well, we'll just use scenario one because it's the simplest. If you look at scenario one, that's the estimated transport revenue.
What number, what page are you on?
We're on slide seven, page seven. If you look there, uh, in the, in the dark gray with the blue letter, the estimated transport revenue.
Okay.
That's, that goes there and, and, you know, you, you paid $600 for an ambulance ride. Well, not everybody pays, and, and Medicare and Medicaid, trust me, don't pay 600 bucks to us for an ambulance ride. It's, it's, there's minimal reimbursement over that. And, and so if every, if every ambulance ride was $600, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
So if we do this, we would be taking on some of what Walla Walla is doing now?
We'd be taking all of what Walla Walla does with, with few exceptions.
Yeah, except for the ALS.
Wouldn't that be why we're getting like, you know, a lot of money back for, uh, scenario five, or we're getting that extra fund because we're not paying them anymore?
Right. That's, scenario five, you know, they, they, it, it looked like the generation on scenario five was. Scenario five, you know, they, it looked like the generation on scenario five was, is they couldn't make an actual determination of how many real advanced life support calls they made, and so they allocated anything that looked like an ALS call to the city of Walla Walla. If we take that all back, the revenue changes fairly dramatically, and the costs drop fairly dramatically.
Well, but my question is about the EMS levy. If, because as I understand it right now, the EMS levy is divided up among the different providers, with Walla Walla getting the lion's share, because they do most of the transports. And that's all governed under an interlocal agreement. And how will we renegotiate that interlocal agreement? When does that expire? Because I would think that we should be able to get more of the EMS levy dollars.
The chief is back there grinning and squinting over the top of his glasses.
I'm sorry, I just like, I feel like, drown.
The EMS levy is negotiated with all of the partners at hand. Now, there's been, there's been a huge amount of posturing by the city of Walla Walla. Did we include the latest letter from the county?
Yeah, I threw that in.
Yeah, so, so, take a look at that.
Yeah, I read that.
This is a lot of posturing, of, you know, the EMS levy is a, it's a three-year levy, six-year, and expires in two.
So presumably, that's when we would renegotiate the interlocal?
That's when we would be, that's when it would, it would be negotiated at that point in time, whether or not it's gonna, whether or not there's gonna be any more allocation or not.
Well, it seems like if we're not, if they're not doing any of our transports, we have a pretty strong case.
Well, again, it's, you know, it's all politics. It's, it'll be, it'll be arm wrestling with the city of Walla Walla. The county commissioners have just weighed, they've tended to not weigh in on this, they've just weighed in kind of what I would describe with a gun.
Yeah, pretty heavy-handed. We should go to, are we going to that public meeting?
I guess we should.
Yes, we all attend. And it's been, it's been quite entertaining.
I'll bet.
Yeah, it's been.
So, so, we'll, we'll continue, you know, then...
I just, I'm trying to put this in terms of how I would explain it to my constituents, who's like, okay, all of a sudden, I can pay 45 bucks a year for an ambulance that I've never used.
Plus if I use it, then it's another $600.
Yeah, plus $600 if I use it, and, and I already pay an EMS levy, what the heck? And so, we, I think, really, really need to come up with a clear...
Yeah, there's been some, there's been some things that have happened with reimbursement on ambulance services that are driving this.
Well, there needs to be like a really clear, one-page, eighth-grade reading level, lots of bulletin white space explanation of why we are considering doing this, and why we are not insane for it. Because on the face of it, it's just like, what?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a... I'm old enough that I remember ambulance as being a station wagon, with kind of an elevated back. And the costs in reimbursements have changed, the structure of how it's changed, the, what Medicare and Medicaid pay for has changed, and expectations have changed dramatically as well.
Well, and unfortunately, it feels like to me, a big chunk of this is failure of governments to be able to work together well. Because what we are looking at for, if we do a utility, is really what should be looked at for the EMS levy in general, and looking at costs and all of those things, and having one governmental entity run the whole thing because of the decisions that they made for a countywide levy, does not sit well.
The problem with the EMS levy is it's, the levy is limited by statute. So it's not, unlike, unlike, and it's a vote of the people that does it, but it's limited to 50 cents per thousand. So, so the, the income is relatively fixed while the costs continue to rise, and there is, a lot of this really isn't, there's, there's some things that could be solved if there was the ability to have what's called a regional fire authority. But that, that becomes problematic in that all of these current quasi-governmental entities, the fire districts, and the four, the four city governments would have to all agree to relinquish their fire services to a regional fire authority, which could control costs better than, than, you know, because this is, this really is just about, what does it cost to do this?
But from what it sounds like to me, and I may be overreacting, but what it sounds like to me is, the way the levy is being divvied up is being held hostage by one government's choices.
Not yet, but it could be. And if the city of Walla Walla does not elect to participate in an emergency medical services levy, then each of the, each of the taxing districts would have to have their own EMS levy. And actually, for us, we would actually get less. We actually benefit from the current fee structure, the current division of the EMS levy. So it, did I mention Byzantine?
We need, we need a way to basically, you know, I liked Sarah's thing that she had a while back on, you know, here's a dollar, and here's how all your property taxes stuff gets divided up. And so, something like that that says, "This is what the ambulance service costs, and this is how much goes, how much we get from EMS levy, this is how much comes from," you know, so that people can understand it. Because right now, it's, you know, what is it now, what is it being proposed? Because it's just like, it's gonna be really hard to explain this. I'm not sure I totally get it.
Well, it's, it is, it is, it is complex. You can see that, you know, depending on how we structure things, it could be very complex.
But just, I, and I think, other than the nursing homes who have, you know, potentially reason to get quite upset, depending on how we do it, but for most people, I think the big hurdle is going to be, should we have an ambulance levy, or not a levy, a utility? And that's the part that I think we really need to be able to explain, that right now, what we have, because most people don't really don't care about digging in this much to the numbers, and, you know, but they can get, looking at, going, okay, this is how much it costs, this is how much EMS will cover, this is how much, you know, they can get that kind of stuff, and I just think right now, with the information that we, that's like up on board docs, people would be justified in being upset, because I don't think they can understand what the issue really is, so.
Well, there's more to follow on this as we go through. You kind of got the structure of what we think the cost would be, and how we're gonna proceed, and we'll come back. Do you, is there any one of those options that you'd prefer to see some more detail on? Or do you want to, do you want to go back to, here's, here's, here's the breakdown of, you know, based on this, here's the breakdown of how it would roll out in a more graphic format?
Well, I like have three levels of questions that I think we need to, you know, first is the, why do we need this? What's gonna be the problems if we don't? Because I was under the impression it wasn't, we'll get a bill, it was, you'll call up for the ambulance, and they'll say, "Sorry, you don't live in Walla Walla."
Well, that could happen.
That can happen, too.
So, so, you know, that's the...
But that's, that, if, if that happens, the city of Walla Walla has problems with the state of Washington.
Yeah, so, so there's, you know, why do we need a levy? There's that piece. Or why do we need a utility? I keep calling it a levy, sorry. And then, obviously, scenario five looks the best, because it's like, hey, yeah, it's cheapest. But I would really like to hear from the doctor and our attorney as to, is there liability around that? You know, if we're like, okay, well, all we have is basic life support, and we scoop somebody up and dash into the hospital, it is close, but, you know, are we opening ourselves up to liability? I don't know, but that's a question I would like to see answered. So those are my thoughts. I'm sure other people have others.
Other thoughts, questions?
Scenario five is looking appealing. I mean, we get four additional staff, general fund support is maintained, we do all our, you know, transports ourselves, just seems like a simplified thing.
Yeah, it's back in our control.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, and, you know, and from the, from the physical point of things, this gives us the best control over what, what happens within the city. Mr. Isabella?
Yeah, I was gonna say, because this is really about trying to maintain our own destiny and cross-containment, because I've tried to reach out to Al Branch several times on that factor, because there's reasons, the city of Chicago went from two paramedics on ambulance to a paramedic and a driver, because you don't need to do that, but they have, but they have an opinion on what they view as their service level, and they want to deviate from that. The other thing I want to add with that regional fire authority, because I know they're got technical virtues toward that, is the problem then is that you have a completely separate tax and authority, so additional property tax demands on the residents, and then the other issue is that even before you get to that, you actually have to do a pretty comprehensive study on doing RFA, and that can go up to about two years, and it's very expensive, because there's a list of basically six consultants across the state you can use per the state, and you have to pay them. When I was in Colfax, we tried doing that with a bunch of those smaller districts in us, and it ran about $80,000, and if you've been through Colfax, you've seen the size of it. So here in Walla Walla County, I imagine it would be quite a bit more than that. And also, I'd add too, in Woodman County, that failed in a massive way, so.
Well, I think, you shouldn't go for something like that until you earn it by being able to play nicely together, and I don't think we're there yet.
Yeah. So let's, let's, unless there's any other questions, let's move along to stormwater utilities.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is kind of an extraordinary evening for us. We're kicking off, again, if you will, our stormwater utility. We'll be forward with that in terms of putting together a structure for complying with the National Fusion Discharge Elimination System, or for short, MPVES permit. It is actually a federal regulation that the state of Washington has primacy for already over, so we work through Washington Department of Publicity, and we have to do this. We have, we're back in 2014, or something consistent coming. So, come August 1st, 2019, we're gonna have to be in compliance, and so we're trying to get our docs to real ahead of time. We're coming to you tonight to show you what the work we've done so far on rates, and actually stay up to the utility. It's actually a two-step process for us that we're looking at. One is putting together the utility to fund the effort, long-term, and the two is to come up with a stormwater plan that will meet the federal guidelines, state guidelines, and keep us out of the fine and the third-party loss of the rate. So, that's kind of where we're at. Just as a real quick reminder, a stormwater utility tries to keep our water bodies clean, okay? That's the point. So water off the streets, water off people's lawns, water off commercial areas, they want to make sure that's not polluting our water systems or natural water sources. So that's the background. And with that, there's two things we're looking at for tonight. One is, we are gonna give you some number of the rates. So, does this look okay? We want to know that, okay? And then two, we're gonna kind of give you some rough guidelines, some ideas. It's fairly, fairly aggressive in terms of the schedule. Does it look like the schedule works? I'm pushing to get this done sooner than later, just because we need the resources here in-house to get started on this and be ready. But that's really a decision we want to look at, kind of weigh in terms of how you want to proceed. So with that, I'd like to introduce our consultants. Angela Taylor is with Paramedics, and she's our lead project manager on this project, and I really appreciate her work. We really have Andy Baker, and he's with FCS, and if the slides look familiar when you guys look here, it's because FCS is kind of a frequent flyer here. It's been water, sewer, ambulance, and now stormwater. So with that, Angela.
Well, I think Andy really has more on this slideshow than I do, but basically, I'll just give you the background of why you need your stormwater utility. So, and as Robert said, in 2019, you will be under the DOE's MPVES stormwater permit. Currently, you're under the county of Walla Walla's umbrella, so with that permit, you'll be required to have public information and outreach, so you want to educate the public on what goes into storm drains, how they can help. You'll want to look at illicit discharge, so anything that's not stormwater. You'll want staff available to be able to locate that and educate the public about what they can and cannot do with this stormwater. There's public participation, so we want feedback from the public. Last week, I went to the farmer's market and had a booth, and, you know, there wasn't a lot of people that were asking questions, but that is part of the process, so you'll be adding information on your utility bills. On your website, you already have some information, like this really good links and stormwater information, so that's good, that's the first step. The second step is operation and maintenance, so all of your facility staff would look at how they're maintaining their equipment, how they're dealing with the parks for pesticides and fertilizer, how they're cleaning the streets. And then the final step would be for construction-related stormwater, like your ongoing construction plus your permanent structures for development and redevelopment. So that's kind of your key steps. So we're developing a stormwater plan that would deal with all of those, and then fund some of those improvements we have in the utility. So I'm gonna turn it over to Andy, and then I'll just step in as needed to highlight.
Yes, we're here to answer any questions you have, because I have copies of the handups for the PowerPoint, kind of, if you don't have those on hand, but it seems like you guys are very, all technologically set up. Obviously, we probably don't need that. So, let's see, I don't think I can work, so let's go to the next slide there. Is that click over? Let's see. That's okay, I can just wait if you don't like that. We'll make it work. All right. So, go to the next one. Is that, oh, there we go. All right, so what we're gonna go over today is what's involved in the utility formation, why are we doing this? In the first place, we've already explained it a little bit. What the rate study process looks like, what the policy issues that we have evaluated, discussed with staff, and are bringing to you, what the overall revenue requirements are projected to be for the stormwater utility, our rate recommendation, and then what the next steps are for getting all of this done. And then what the next steps are for getting all of this done? And then the penalties that we need to, to keep the state happy and federal. So, I don't need to belabor this too much as we already discussed. So beginning in 2019, middle of 2019, the city is going to be required by the Department of Ecology to comply with these two permanent requirements. Back in 2014, the DOE directed the city to establish a stormwater utility to, to help address those requirements. That's their common recommendation. It is not absolutely required, but there are a lot of good reasons why they make that recommendation. That's because having this set up as a utility means that it will be financially sufficient. It ensures that there are reliable revenues that are dedicated to meeting those stormwater management requirements. So rather than funding this out of your property taxes or other general funds, this means that there are funds set aside specifically for meeting these federal slash DOE requirements. It also means that we can recover those funds differently than just on property tax. Because the need for these costs isn't necessarily aligned with the value of somebody's property. It's more tied to what causes us to have stormwater that we have to manage. And then also, just the entire process of setting up the stormwater utility ensures a degree of transparency and accountability to the public. With the rate study process, we go through a couple of steps to understand what all needs to happen to get to a conclusion of, here is the rate that we're gonna charge people. And that involves developing a policy framework for how we're going to, how we're going to manage our utility from a financing perspective. And then how we are going to collect the rates from a rate design perspective? And whether there will be any credits involved? I'll talk more about those policies in just a moment. And then it involves the rate analysis, where we are looking at identifying operating and capital requirements, which both go into your revenue requirement. And then informed by those policy decisions, we develop a rate design that will recover that revenue requirement. And then from there, we move into outreach, implementation, and documentation, which are necessary steps and where those fit in the process towards the end of this. Next slide here. So I led off a little, the three main areas of policies that we evaluated are what the underlying fiscal policies that we're going to try and manage to are? What the rate structure should look like for how we recover the revenues? And then what rate credits, if any, should be considered? And go to the next one here, dive into the fiscal policies. Much of the fiscal policy recommendations that we are making are similar or the same exactly as your water and wastewater fiscal requirements. So the first one that I have for you here is the operating reserve. And this is a one-time amount of money that we need to generate through the rates that is then held so that you have cash on hand to cover fluctuations over the course of a year in the, in cash flow or, so revenue coming in, revenue going out, variation. As the money comes in and the billing cycle, we want to have some amount of money on hand to make sure that you're always going to be able to pay the bills as they come along. And sixty days is our typical recommendation of that. That's in line with what you're using for water and wastewater. But this, I want, that's not money that additional funds that have to be generated every year. If it's only the first year of the utility, we can collect those funds. Capital reserve is similar in terms of, it's a one-time amount of fund that we need. And this is one where there are a couple of different ways to develop this amount for your, this is something that when we're just initially setting up the utility, we don't know exactly how much we're going to need. And so we use benchmarks such as the total value of your assets to inform how much money we want to have on hand. So we're recommending one percent of the total value of your stormwater assets. Once the utility is up and running, that's some, that's one that we might come back and evaluate. Right now, your water and your wastewater have a set dollar amount that they've managed to. I have, we have a recommendation here for a debt service coverage policy. We're making that recommendation for completeness. I want to be clear that we aren't recommending planning for issuing debt for your stormwater utility within the planning period. That's, uh, that's mostly because at this point, you know, there's too much uncertainty in even having things set up. And also the nature of the capital projects that are in the planning period don't really justify going after the bond market or going to any other sort of debt. So we're recommending a policy just so that at some point in the future, when you have it, you have that policy in place. For capital funding, we are recommending that, as I just said, capital projects be funded through cash that is, so funds generated through your rates and then with grants, but not with using any debt for capital projects. So if there isn't sufficient cash or grants, that means defer the project rather than take on debt to pay for it today. And then system reinvestment is, this is more of a goal than a specific dedicated funding amount where we've identified exactly the projects. The intent here is to, through the rates on an ongoing basis, be planning to have some amount of money be generated, set aside for reinvesting in the system, making sure that our infrastructure stays maintained. And our recommendation here is that we start with at fifty percent of the annual replacement cost. And then over the course of five years, aim to build up to meeting a hundred percent of that replacement cost. That's our starting point. But that isn't tied directly to any individual projects. Once the utility is up and functioning, developing exactly what project happens when is something that'll, that'll take place then. So for now, this is getting us to a dollar amount that we want to get, but not actually individual projects. Go to the next one. All right, I can talk to you for a long time about rate structure choices, but I know we have already talked about a lot of things at, tonight. And so if you'd like to, I'd be happy to, but we can also, if we just hit the next one. Our recommended rate structure is based on impervious area and it's using an equivalent service unit basis. And this is the most common rate structure throughout the state. And the reason for that is that it is closely tied to the costs that a utility incurs. So it's based on impervious surface, and that is roofs, driveways, anything that, when water hits it, it will run off into the street and the utility then has to deal with that water. And so the equivalent service unit piece of that refers to the idea that rather than measuring every single square foot of impervious area in the entire city, we are saying for single-family residences, we're going to take the average amount of impervious area based on statistically significant sampling of those. And we're gonna charge every single-family home the same amount. And it's only for non-single-family parcels where we're gonna go and measure what their actual amount of impervious area is. And their rate will be based on a equivalent. So a single-family house, the average map will be an equivalent service unit. And if a, uh, if a restaurant, parking lot has three times that amount of impervious area, they would be billed three equivalent service units. And so this structure is the one that is, of the choices that are out there, best able to give us rate equity that is tied to what causes costs to be incurred. We have the data to be able to do it. It's relatively administratively easy and overall, it's feasible to implement. So that's why we're making that recommendation. In addition to the general rate structure, we're proposing establishing a credit policy for rate payers that do more than the minimum required amount to manage stormwater on their property. However, we're recommending that the amount of that credit get capped based on the amount of actual cost that will be, that can be reduced if everyone did the maximum amount possible. Because some of these costs that, of the requirements that the utility is going to have to perform to meet everything on an annual basis that the Ecology and EPA are requiring, don't go away even if everyone did everything possible they could to mitigate stormwater on their property. And so those costs, we still need to recover. And so we're only going to have the credit be the portion that will go away if they, if they do everything that could be done on their property. All right? So these are the, uh, this is the list of requirements for compliance that the city has. Angela already walked through these. And if, if you would like, we can go into detail on exactly what's involved with these. But overall, the main takeaway for the, from a financial perspective is that all of these things take staff time to do. And our estimation of what it's going to take to comply with these is that you're gonna need two new staff positions to be able to support all of these new requirements. Most of that is in the additional operations, maintenance, and monitoring that's gonna be required to, to meet these, these new boxes that you have to check. So if we go to the next slide here, this is our projection of the operating expenses that are, and as I said, it's really driven by salaries and benefits on those two new staff positions. There are also some other programs that are more direct cost type things. The public outreach and public involvement components have materials costs, mailing, all of that. And so there are, in addition to the straight salaries and benefits, other comps that are associated with those regulatorily mandated programs that you will, the utility will be performing. There are some, in the grand scheme of costs, relatively lead administrative costs that we've assumed. We base them off of what we have actually observed your administrative costs are from your water and sewer, high water, wastewater funds. So we think it's, it's, uh, it's pretty lean, but we think it's realistic. And then there are, of course, our state taxes to be paid on rate revenues that are collected. We are accounting for that as well. And then because this is setting up a new thing, we have a contingency on the operating costs because things happen. And we want to, when we, in the rate that we recommend, we want to be sure that if something happens that we have not assumed in here, we have a little bit of buffer to make sure that you're still able to meet all your obligations without having to look at the general fund to cover a shortfall. Any questions on these projected operating expenses? We're assuming that these are gonna escalate with inflation over time and that's why that was stepping up through the planning period? All right, capital costs. So through the, in the stormwater management plan, Angela has identified a number of capital costs that are, that are appropriate or necessary to be funded or to be done, I should say, for the utility. That involves street sweeper, back-to-track. We have a comprehensive list here later. So it's a mix of purchasing equipment and then also actual upgrades.
Upgrades and some point source equipment.
Yeah, yeah, so, but it's all things that we expect will be in the stormwater plan and identified as things that need to get done. And so that's the basis for these capital costs. We've escalated them based on the timing that we have in here so that we are accounting for the fact that if we're not doing these things, making all of these purchases today, they will cost more in the future and it's a little bit higher than the rate inflation that's based on what we're seeing, what we're seeing in the, in the state today. So our next step here is what our rate recommendation is. So with that statistical analysis of the residential parcels, we have determined that the average amount of impervious area is about thirty-five hundred square feet for a single-family home. And so that is the, that defines our equivalent service unit. And so that means every single-family home will pay the same rate based on that assumed amount, even if they happen to be slightly higher or slightly lower. Mostly, we do that because the amount of administrative hat expense that you have to go to to map out every single home, it just isn't worth it. We, in, in what we observed, there was a closer-than-normal distribution too. So we feel pretty good about that as a, as an approach. And what that means is that based on there being a total of about, on the order of twenty-one hundred single-family homes, they're going to need to pay nine dollars and eighteen cents a month to support the revenue requirements that we've identified. For non-residential, again, it is going to be based on your actual amount of impervious area. There's about six hundred and fifty non-residential parcels and that's still a lot, but Angela and Prisette have mapped all of those out and figured out how much each one of the impervious area, each one of those has. And so for them, they will pay nine dollars and eighteen cents, that same amount, per equivalent service unit. And so, and that'll be based on what they actually have. So it's really tied to what they are contributing in costs. If they are doing onsite mitigation in excess of the minimum required, then they can earn up to a credit of two dollars and sixty-three cents per ESU per month. So they can get some benefit to reflect that they are going above and beyond what they are required to. But it is, they're still going to have to pay for the cost, the portion of that cost that doesn't go away. That's all of the administrative and salary costs and just box checking that has to happen regardless of how much flow actually happens to come off with any person. And then we are recommending that from 2020 to 2024, that rate be increased by three percent a year just to keep pace with inflation. Those costs are, your operating costs are gonna be going up along with that. And we want to make sure that the rate is sustainable long-term. Any questions on that? All right, so now I said that you have the operating expenses, your capital expenses, and then a rate. What I did not tell you is that that rate doesn't fully cover all of the capital expenses. Let's clip once more here. So if we, that capital spending chart was very spiky. And if we were going to generate through the rates enough funds to, right away in 2020, be able to cover that big spike of capital expenditures that are scheduled in 2020, we would need to be charging a significantly higher rate. And so our recommendation is that we set the rate at that nine dollars and eighteen cents level. And we go back to Ecology and say, we are setting a rate that is high enough to recover our operating expenses, high enough to recover a reasonable level of reinvestment in our system, as we said before. But it isn't quite high enough to cover all of the things that we need to do to be fully doing everything that we, we have identified. And we need to stay to help with that with grants. And that's what this looks like, is saying this full amount here, to put all of that requirement out of the blue in just two years on the residents of the city would be two owners. And instead, state, if, if we want to have those projects happen in 2020, we need, we need grants to help make it happen. We're gonna put our share in, but we need help. What that looks like is that we have a planned date- What that looks like is that we have a plan date for all of the projects that have been identified. But if we don't get any grants to support that, we are saying, hey, we're not going to, we, we'll still do it on our own, but we're not going to get there until a little later, because it's going to take us some time to collect those funds to be able to pay for the whole chunk of it. And this is a, this is a chart that we put together, and we've shared with Ecology. And they, I don't, I'm, I'm not going to characterize exactly what they, they didn't say, yes, we're going to stand behind you and be your biggest cheerleaders. They said, that's, because that's not really what their, what the context of the meeting was, or what their role is. They didn't give us a hundred percent blessing, but what they did say is that there are multiple grant programs available, and they are eager to work with the city to put together the most attractive grant packages that they, that they can. And so, where, whether there will be grants to cover every single one of these, I, I couldn't, I couldn't commit to you on that. But the nature of all of these projects is consistent with things that they said. They have given grants to other communities in the recent past, and none of the projects in what they are is, on its face, excluded from being eligible for grants. So, that's.
One thing that they said during our meeting is that they are not going to hold you to retrofitting your entire city year one, but that's kind of an ongoing process. As long as you're implementing your six steps, and you're moving from this point forward, so that all of your construction sites, all of your development, you're taking into account stormwater, you're educating the public, and you're looking for evidence at this turn, as long as you're doing that, and you're, you're reading your reporting data, you're doing your annual reports, you're doing the TME alcohol testing that will be required, as long as you're doing that, you don't have to get a back truck, if you can remember. You don't have to do your C-street improvements or your T Street improvements. I mean, they're nice, but they're not required for, for compliance. So that's the background there.
And I appreciate that. I'm glad that they're sticking to that kind of a concept. I, I though would kind of like to see those last two columns almost flipped. I think the last column should be the planned date, and then we should have a column that says date with grants.
Ooh.
Because what we should be saying is, this is what we can do. We will, as part of our administrative costs, aggressively go after grants to try to reach these earlier dates. But we should be asking for, or setting the expectation that those are our dates.
That's great. Yes, I agree with it. It's like you have some experience with.
Yeah, it's almost like maybe I.
Kind of confirm what Andy was saying, is that what Ecology told us was that, they don't really, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's not really approved and give us legal cover for our plan, they acknowledge it, like here we have it.
Correct.
And we still have to make sure that we're reading the permit, and if there's any third-party lawsuit, we still have to be showing that we're, generally you're safe if you're showing progress, and if you're showing some level of compliance. So that's kind of been our goal.
Which is why I think it's important to have the plan dates be the ones that we could do it without grants. Because if we say that we're going to have a back to truck by 2020, and then we're like, oh, we didn't get the grants, then we potentially have some difficulty. Whereas, you know, under promise, over deliver.
Yes, yes, I like it. All right. So, do you have a couple more? Any, any more questions on, on this before we move on? Okay. So, I just wanted to, for some context, where that $9.18 goes you. So, this is a somewhat random sampling, except for the bottom one, I can guess why I put that there.
We always have to know that one.
You have to know, you have to know. So, what I, we did not do all of these rates ourselves, and so I don't have deep insight into every one of them. I can tell you that for many of the, for the two lowest up there, they aren't getting full cost recovery. So, that's, and the scale is also different.
That and their swaths are different. They have a lot of implementation, so they don't have.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the economy of scales is important here. I did some looking at law laws earlier, they did some planning a couple of years ago. They had three tiers of a little service, and depending which one you look at, there's a ton of people on the stormwater system working for it. And I'm guessing, if we want to do a comparison between the two, we're about a half to a third, or even a quarter of the staffing levels, that they would have the same level of service. So we're significantly lower. We set that on purpose because we know our people cannot afford any more than that. And that's why that extra bid, we're looking for grants, because we told the college, folks, we can't afford so much. That's how the background.
Okay, that's how we, we got to that. So then, next one here, timeline on where we go from here. So, this is, my first timeline slide is on the utility formation and rates piece, and the next one would be getting to the overall stormwater management plan and permit compliance. So, we are out of, out of May into June here, because I have to point to go on, into June, we're here now. Our intention, with your input, is to have ordinance for stormwater utility formation and resolution for rates to be introduced on the 12th. Unless we hear that there are significant other things that we need us to go back to. I want to say, overall, this schedule is very aggressive, and everyone will do everything they can to make it happen, but there are, there's a lot to be done over the next few months to get to a August 1 earliest possible implementation date. That, that will be challenging. But we want to lay out our goal and work towards that. So yes, the, the schedule here would be 12th for the introduction, a city newsletter on the 25th, hearing on the 26th, and then action on the rates on the 9th.
The item I want to add to is, you only see a farmer's outreach listed once, but we're going to have city staff getting input from residents at all seven farmers markets through this time, so.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Could I make a suggestion about that?
Yeah.
I kind, I really like that idea, and I think it would be nice to have city staff kind of saying what's going on with our city and all the farmers markets, even when we're done with the rates thing.
Well, we're, we're going to start doing this, so in addition to this, John's going to have a booth out there for the camp plan and the parks plan too, so.
Awesome. Yeah, that's great. I mean, I don't think, I think we need to be careful that we don't think that that takes the place of other public outreach. Um, I think, and so, did we talk last night about what we're doing as far as outreach to the business community?
No, we didn't. No. No, I, I don't think that in my best of my best.
Okay. I mean, I hallucinated that, but anyway. Because it seems like, you know, we should do some sort of specific outreach to the business community on this particular one.
I mean, it's been mentioned during the economic development commission.
Yeah, but I mean, like our business community. So, I don't know what our best way of communicating with them is.
Smoke signals.
Smoke signals. Light a fire in the middle of Main Street, you can roast hot dogs.
Well, no, I mean, part of it's, you know, but then part of it is our economic development commission here, because it does have business owners on College Avenue who are part of the numbers, though.
And I assume you've reached out to the university and the school district?
I, I've reached out to both of them to give them a heads up that this is coming down the pipe.
And our poor nursing homes.
So option five looks best.
Sorry. I'm just trying to think of, you know, who's going to go, nobody ever told me about this. Everybody? Everybody, but, okay. Who's going to go, no one ever told me about this, and we have to say, you're right. That's the ones I'm concerned about.
One other time I add in addition to this is every month, I know Harvey has time on the grapevine, I was just at the grapevine, but I talked about this extensively on that, and that's now a radio show that's on throughout the valley.
Yeah.
The grapevine?
The grapevine, it was a podcast, now it's actually a radio show.
I've never even heard of it.
It's put on by Alcorn Media on my Columbia Basin.
And, and, you know, we do K U J on a regular basis.
And so it has been mentioned on those?
Yeah, yeah, I've done that.
I'm sure this will incentivize the college to add a parking lot, more impervious area.
You don't, you don't impervious to be parking lots. Trying to get them to put in impervious parking lots. So far, I'm batting zero.
And even then, they can only get the, not the amount.
Still, they could get something for it.
They could get some.
Yeah. All right, so the next, this is more, a little further long-term, but for the stormwater plan, there will be a workshop on 4th of July, and then introduction on the 24th, and then adoption on the August 18th is the schedule we have laid out. And then the intention is that once that is done, we can begin advertising for those two new positions that we, that we discussed beginning in September, and I'm taking care of that through the end of the year, because it takes some time. And then what we're aiming for is, by that August 1, 2019, the permit will be enforced, everything will be up and running, and we will be secure. That's the, that's the broader, broader, that's the further out benchmark. The other ones, you know, they're aggressive, we have, things might happen, that one needs to, we need to get there, so. Any questions on, on the schedule of things? So in terms of our next steps, yeah, I, I sort of gave you where, where we need to be on formation and the rate adoption. With regards to implementation, we need to continue working to get a database of everyone that we're going to send a bill to, and how many equivalent service units they have ready to go and validated, and making sure we're sending it to the right place. And that's a, I think that's maybe the biggest hurdle that would delay our overall implementation goal, is just getting that 100% ready to go. And then continuing the outreach efforts. And then on our end, we are, we have a draft report that will be, once I incorporate any feedback from you all, we will be having ready to transmit over to staff for review, and that'll be part of what you, we have in your packet when we did the initial introduction of the ordinance and then, and the resolution. Any questions? Any? All right. You're golden. Any, any other things that you would like to make sure that we see, that you see in, in that report, in the documentation that we're pulling together, besides the changing those comps? That I can do quick, that, I like that.
A little bit kind of off to the side here, but I'm curious, what sort of limitations on like capital investment are there for this? Can, could we add some investment in like adding curbing to certain streets? Would that be within the?
Well, that's what T Street is.
Oh, okay.
Because right now, that's a sheet during the Garris meeting. So that's a huge, like four-block section of direct point source loading.
Okay. So question is?
Yeah. Yeah, so the limitations on the use.
I wasn't going to say it, I was trying to be subtle here.
The limitation on what projects would qualify would be, with T Street, it's, there's a direct stormwater impact that it would be mitigating. So if that's, if there are streets where that's not the case, then we wouldn't be able to use those.
And then my placeholder for point source loading improvements, that's where every, you've got a catch basin that directly goes into the creek. It just, the, the pipe goes right out. So you have no treatment, nothing, it just runs off the road directly into the creek. And you see that on Garris and Stone and Thompson Creek.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Angela.
If I could just address the council very briefly, two things we're looking for again is direction in terms of timing, does that look okay to you? And how aggressive, what would like to shoot for that? And then two, what about that, was it $9.18?
$9.18.
Is that sound, okay, we said that about what we thought we could afford? I know that's a tough one, especially after hearing about the, right, the other utility.
Well, with any luck, people will be angry about this one because it's higher, right?
Yes, thank you.
Then we could say, hey, it's not our fault.
Yeah, at least this one called you, made us do it.
Yeah, we can pass the buck here, take no responsibility.
It, it, it looks high to me, but I, I don't see anything in there that I'm going, oh, I shouldn't have that, you know? So, I mean, it's all important stuff.
$40,000 is about kind of what we aim at. A typical utility we've heard is about a million bucks. And so we're even half under, half, 50%, I mean, 40%.
Yeah, and for me, I like seeing that we're not planning for debt in there. And I think that that's a huge thing to say, you know, we're not just going out and leveraging everything, yeah.
If you don't have the money, you're perfect.
We're not planning for debt. We are gonna, we're planning to mostly rely on, on grants for the capital, or else push it way out.
Right.
One thing that I thought of, have we like thrown it up on the sign out front?
Yeah, we could.
Especially like encouraging people to come talk about it at the farmer's market. Because that's my big worry with most of our rate increases, we've talked about, and we've talked about, and then it's like several months later that they actually go, because they start January 1st, and, you know, and this one feels like fast and high, and, so, I mean, I support it, I mean, I would kind of be really hypocritical if I'm like, no, stormwater is no longer important.
Change everything about yourself.
Yes. But I also feel like it, you know, we really, when we're going this fast, we really need to bend over backwards as far as informing people.
That's exactly what Mike was telling me, we need to make sure we cover our bases upfront with the public so they understand, so they don't go in, all right, so I hope they get it.
Can we get the U B to write an article about it?
I'm sure we could. I mean, we could at least, we could give them a briefing on it and see where it goes.
Yeah. Because I know Andy told me a while back that he'd been trying to write about stormwater for years and couldn't get anywhere, but raising rates usually is news.
And, yeah, I think it'd be interesting to talk about stormwater and kind of the things that you can change on your own property, for instance. In the same token that we're talking about, we're not recycling for you anymore, here is options for you on this, and just kind of have some sort of education, something that provides that to the community.
That'll be absolutely a component of a whole outreach and plan. We can start that early too, as in the context of our discussion, get people started on that, so.
FYI, email me and, and remind me, but I had a student a number of years ago put together a whole set of plants that are local plants that are good for rain gardens. So they're not, they're not invasive species, you don't have to worry about, and they're for this county, because most of the guidance is all based from Western Washington, or Michigan, or someplace like that. So, so as, and then as your staff get on board and start working in education, they'll be really handy. We kept meaning to publish it somewhere, but we never did. So it's like, it's amazing, amazing information that's totally secret.
And you get published in the journal.
So, so here's what I'm hearing is, go and really publicize, make sure we get the word out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chief Blinder.
Could that fall into, is, let me think of the education?
I keep pushing them to come talk to these guys.
So Chief, so you saw in your packet, there was a flyer that Wall Wall Fire District Number 5, which is in Burbank, is graciously allowing us to purchase an ambulance that they're surplusing for $27,500. That comes with an $18,000 electric cot. It comes with Jaws of Life, comes with a radio, comes with all those types of things. So it's really a sweetheart deal. And we're just letting you know about that this is going to be on the next council agenda for us to put bid on and purchase.
Sounds good.
This one also only goes 10 miles over the posted speed limit?
Always.
Good.
And is an electric cot similar to an electric chair?
No, the wheels are not powered, the legs of the lifting of the person. So that we cut down on back injuries.
Oh, that sounds much, that sounds much nicer.
For when we're lifting our great weight.
I, I was like, I don't know why we need an electric cot when an assisted suicide is not legal.
They didn't mean to put that in there.
Just curious what the Kuzma Auto Eject is?
Kuzma Auto Eject is when you start up the engine and it ejects the shore power. Kuzma is the main brand.
Okay.
Oh.
I was curious.
So you don't drive down the road pulling the station with you.
But it does not eject the driver in case of annoyance?
No, it does not. It's not a James Bond mobile.
Oh, how much for that? A little bit there?
The liability of the sale, we wouldn't accept it.
I get it, I guess. Good answer.
Great.
We have been for almost two hours. Do, does anybody want to take a short break?
No. Yeah. Mike's gonna talk really quick.
Well, yeah, the pocket I net, the, thanks. Pocket I net one is really quick, luckily, because most of it's already embedded in the franchise code that we adopted. The big problem is that within all of our codes, we don't really have anything governing the 5G cell, microcell technology. And it's going to take a while for plan and commission to come up with the code to govern that long term. So we don't want to rush that. On the other hand, we don't want to basically prohibit new technology, especially when a lot of the residents want other internet options. So the idea is to do an interim solution. So this would be a shorter franchise, basically five years, because the pocket I net franchise was going to expire anyway. And this would base, this basically embeds in the interim franchise ordinance that Pocket I Net worked with, with the city of Wall Wall, except it puts in a franchise. And we would be able to process for the microcell facilities at the time. There's a public comment period, has some concealment restrictions on there. And we can say yea, nay, or augment direction. So really, it just allows us in the interim while plan and commission is dealing with this to not prohibit newer technology which folks want, so.
If they're providing kind of this, the 5G internet then, I guess that'd be like your regular like internet service? Okay. Would that, well, I guess it's not really relevant, but I was going to ask if, you know, this is going to slow down like rollout of their fiber line?
Uh, I mean, I'm not really privy to the private, the private talks at Pocket I Net. I just know that it behooves us to get this in because there are areas of town where they really need the 5G to occur at. And I also was concerned that we wouldn't be at a competitive disadvantage with Wall Wall because they've moved aggressively to get this going. And Pocket I Nets are actually constructing the system over there right now. So I didn't want to drag our feet to the long end of this.
Questions? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Ms. Kildore.
Okay. Tonight I am going to try to be not too wordy. But I am bringing to you guys a sort of a proposal to kind of change what we're doing with our investments, our money that we don't need for current everyday expenses that we've got currently in the LGIP or the local government investment pool. The LGIP is, it's where, I don't know in history when we started putting it there, but it's been there ever since I came to the city. It's a safe place for it. The problem with LGIP is that it, the rate that it yields goes up and down really quickly. Like it follows the everyday ups and downs of the market, so it's not, you can never really plan on what you're going to get from it. And also, there's no way to like set an amount that you can plan on for the future. So we've been talking to Time Value Investments, which is an investment firm out of the Seattle area, and they specialize in public funds investing. I think they have over 300, over 350 public entities, including cities, counties, water districts, special districts, housing authorities, hospitals, et cetera. So this is what they do. They're very well versed in it and they've developed, all of their reporting is custom reporting that's made for entities like us to have exactly the information that we need to know what we're doing with our money and know when we've got decisions coming up and have the required information that the auditor's going to need each year. And it's just simple and clean and that's what they've designed it to be, so. Mike and I asked them to put together a proposed portfolio for us as to what they would recommend doing with our money. Right now, we have about 4.3 million in the LGIP. And they recommended pulling about 4 million of that out. I'm not sure why that's happening. And putting it in treasury notes and federally backed bonds. So that would be like Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, anything that's federally backed. Those are, if you look at the RCWs, that's what the state prescribes for safe investments for, or allowable investments for entities like ours. So I'm not going to walk through these in detail with you unless you have specific questions because I don't want to bore you and it, it takes a while to explain them. But basically, they recommended, well, Mike asked them to present us with a ladder approach over the next five years for maturities. And so that's what they've done. And on page six of the reports, you can see what they've recommended. There's treasury notes, Freddie Mac, I don't know what that one, the third one is. Federal Home Loan Bank and Federal Farm Credit Bank. And so they've recommended investing in those securities for the next five years or so. And on one of the, I think it's on the second handout, yeah. They did this little summary for us on what, kind of what the difference would be in investing and what we're in now, which is just LGIP and what investing in these notes and bonds would be. And so if you go to the very last paragraph, it says, this means that for every million dollars invested, we would earn an additional around 7,000 a year. So if we move 4 million dollars, that would be really close to around 30,000. Just under 28,000 additional dollars we would be able to more plan on having because these are fixed rate investments instead of the market going up and down, so. It's safe, it's, it would leave about 300,000, 300,000 to 500,000 in LGIP, which is extremely liquid, easy to pull out if we needed in an emergency. We also have, we also have probably about over 3 million dollars in our regular bank accounts in, at Banner Bank. So that's also readily accessible funding if, you know, if we need it. So we felt like 4 million was really safe to move to something where we don't have immediate access to it, where we're waiting for maturity dates to be able to pull it out. And if you go to the next handout, this is just a really quick diagram of how investing with a broker like time value works. So this is recommended by the G, the Government Finance Officers Association, that there's a delivery versus payment process. So what happens is we talk to the broker on the phone, say, okay, we want about 500,000 of such and such. The broker then sends the, a confirmation of that to us and sends the bond to a safekeeping account that we have set up at an independent bank. And then we, as the public entity, will forward the money for the bonds and the confirmation from the broker to the safekeeping bank. And they won't, basically, they won't finalize the transaction until everything lines up and matches so that the, they can see the broker's giving them the same information that we're giving them and it's all done through a third party. So that's why they call it a safekeeping bank, because it's basically a check and balance kind of thing. So anyway, that's something they, yes.
So I've been talking to realtors and they're like, there's this huge scam going along where everybody's, where people are sending wrong wire instructions. So this way, you would always be wiring to the same bank?
Yeah.
So you wouldn't worry about that scam?
We would set up, in fact, they've already started, they've already asked for the information from me to set up a safekeeping account. And I haven't finalized that at all because I wanted to talk to you guys about it first. But basically, we would be setting up our own bank account. It's just like a money market account at an independent bank. In this case, they recommend US Bank. Based on their experience, the fees associated with the safekeeping accounts at US Bank are the lowest. So that's where they're recommending we go. So there would be our own bank account there that all of this would, every transaction would funnel through. Okay. The next handout is just an information sheet about time value investments. If you're interested in reading more about them and what they do. And then the last section is our, the section of our code that's ancient that deals with investment of city funds. And I, I need to have our attorney look at it to make sure that this plan would work with our code as it's currently written. However, even if it doesn't, the investment policy is on the drawing board for the next phase of financial policy, so we'd be rewriting it anyway. But basically, this says, in the second line, you can see, it says, these funds may be invested as prescribed by R C W 35A 40050. And I pulled that R C W, I did not put that in your packet because I just pulled it a few minutes before the meeting, but it says, any excess or inadequate funds on hand in the city treasury not otherwise invested for the specific benefit of any particular fund may be invested by the city treasurer in United States government bonds, notes, bills, or certificates of indebtedness. So basically, the R C W is okaying the types of investments that they have recommended for us. But like I said, I need our attorney to look at this because in the last sentence of the first paragraph, or the second to last, it says, invested in a savings account or certificate or other approved insured investment in a savings and loan association. So I'm not sure if that's too specific and exclusion, excluding what this plan would do or not. Anyway, but like I said, it's on the varying board to be rewritten anyway, so it's not really an issue. Does anyone have any questions?
I was having?
Ms. Sherman in Memphis.
How did you find that time value investment?
Well, they've called me repeatedly for the past five years, for starters. But they offer a public funds investing class every year and I went this spring to try to learn more about what it is we should be doing. And it was a really good class. I learned a lot and I felt really comfortable with them and met the representative that has our area and I just felt really good about this firm from that interaction, so.
Do they have information on their fees and cost and stuff?
He recommended, they have two different ways that they, two different ways they manage or handle accounts. One is managed investments and the other is just as a broker relationship. But he said with public entities like ours, the difference between them is really negligible in the kind of service that you get. So managed investments would be charged a certain amount per transaction and that kind of thing. But the brokerage situation is basically, they get to buy the bonds at a little bit better yield than what they sell them to us at, so they get the margin of difference in the yield. Let's see. Can I explain that backwards? Basically, there, what it boils down to is the brokerage situation that he recommended for us. We wouldn't have any fees out of our stated earnings. There would not ever be like a fee section on our statements because they're benefiting on the front end of the sale instead of from drawing a fee from what we're earning. So.
I'm just curious about, what money is this? I mean.
This is, so.
Gosh, why does this keep, they're really hot to me.
This is like, so the city's total fund balance is like seven or eight million, somewhere in there. This is the bulk, this is like over half of that. This is money that's reserved for certain purposes, like debt service reserves. Money that we're saving for capital, because some of the current expense ending fund balance is in here. It's basically our cushion money that we save because we either have to or we want to, but it's not figured into our regular everyday budget.
So if there's a, some incredible expense emergency, how accessible are these funds?
Well, some of the bonds that he recommended are callable, so at a certain point in their lifespan, we could call them on certain dates. But we wouldn't have everyday access to this money. But we have like, I mean, I can't really think of anything that would be more than what we've got in our Banner Bank accounts, which is like three to four million over there, so.
So we're pretty, pretty darn safe?
Yeah. Plus, we would still be leaving 300,000 to 500,000, something, somewhere in that range in LGIP, so.
Hopefully, we don't have any unexpected.
Yeah. And LGIP, I can call up and they can wire it same day, so. So I guess I'm just kind of taking your temperature on this and seeing if you'd like me to bring it to a council meeting?
I like the money.
I would like this to go to the finance committee before it comes to council.
Okay.
I mean, it, it sounds like a good idea once you check the boxes of, you know, making sure that we've got the lea- sure that we've got the legal.